This meeting to order here of the Board of Trustees, the Village of Cambridge. Our meeting of July 25th, 2023. Roll call, please.
Trustee Burnick.
Here.
Franklin.
Here.
Whitmore.
Here.
Hollenbeck.
Here.
Krista Eppson Phelps.
Here.
McNally.
Here.
Thank you. If we could stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Lisa, has this meeting been properly posted?
The agenda was posted in the upper and lower levels of the Amundsen Community Center Cambridge Post Office, Badger Bank, and the Village website.
All right. Thank you. At this time, we're going to go into public comment. Now, we have invited in our supervisor, Dane County, Kate McGinnity. Kate, if you can come up, introduce yourself, have a seat, and give us an update.
Thank you. President McNally, and Lisa, and the board for your time this evening. I'd like to introduce Dina Zentner, who has been on our Dane County Broadband Task Force since its inception. So she's here this evening to help answer questions and just provide additional perspective. So I believe that the presentation is in your packet this evening. And this can be very informal, so feel free to ask questions as we go. And mostly, I'll write down your questions and get back to you because I'm not a broadband expert. I'm the person that's connecting the dots. As you know, as elected officials, that's what we do. So this is where we've been. So just a little bit of background. One of the times I was before you, I was explaining why we were not getting to expand broadband in rural Dane County. And it was because the maps from the Federal Commission and our state PSC were inaccurate. It said that Dane County was covered up 98%, when in fact, that was not true because of how the data was collected. And I can talk more about that if you want to get into the weeds. But basically, one of the times I was here, we talked about something we called the square donut. So what we did is, we took only the rural parts of Dane County. We took out all the cities. We only did the towns and villages. And we did an extensive collection of our own data to find out what our coverage truly was. Because you need to show a need in order to qualify for all the funding that's coming in, like, you know, it's kind of like drinking from a fire hose. It's just like the money's pouring in as we're getting organized. So now we have that data. You all helped us get that data. We also got some wonderful granular data from MADREP, which was doing speed tests. And you all helped me. We got that information out. We've got really good data now. And so what we've been doing, so we had one year, and then we got our data, we collected the data, and we came up with recommendations. I'm not telling anybody in this room anything new, I'm sure, to say that, you know, broadband expansion, it's not a nice-to-have broadband in your home. It's not just a comfort or a luxury. It is an absolute necessity for most people. It's a necessity for people, especially in rural Dane County, to access, as we know, healthcare, education, vocational options, you know, the ability to work digitally, as well as entertainment and connection with others. And it has a huge economic impact on our villages and towns to have strong broadband. It draws people to us. It draws economic development to us. One of the things is, you know, it started off knocking doors back in 2020 before anybody had heard of COVID. And it ended up with public hearings where literally, we kept hearing the same thing from hundreds of people. It doesn't matter what the data says. I got to drive to McDonald's to get a signal, you know, or I got to, you know, find a library that's open to get my kids' homework in on time, you know, all of these, just hundreds of people across rural Dane County told us that. So we put together, as you know, a task force, and we have the members there. They've changed slightly in the second iteration, so that we met for a year, and then we continued for two years. And we're finishing up the first year of that two years. And we're now looking not just at the infrastructure needs in the rural part, but we're looking at the overall affordability, which is across the county, including urban. So we've added some urban, an urban supervisor, and we've changed up a little bit of who's on the task force. So the accomplishments, in addition to that getting our data accurate so that we can now apply for those grants that allow us to expand and have that accurate information, we also put together recommendations, which included knowing where our infrastructure is in Dane County. That's another thing we didn't know. We didn't know where there was cable and where there wasn't. And that directly impacts our planning, obviously, and our prioritizing. So we have just gotten the report, and we're working with the consulting firm that gave us that, not only that, is that something we have to pay attention to? No problem. So we're working with this consulting firm to kind of put all the data together along with the needs that we found in Dane County, and help us put together a priority list of where we're going to go, when we're going to go, and how we're going to proceed. The other thing that we're really excited about is what we learned is our villages, and especially our towns, do not have the capacity on their boards. Some of our town boards are two or three people, you know, only a couple, you know, several people in number. And they simply can't do the lift of these huge grant applications, which is the only way right now that we can expand, is a grant application where we have a public-private partnership between, you know, a public entity, like this board, you know, this board or a town board, and then an internet service provider. So, you know, we need somebody that, you know, can help us with those relationships. So we were able to secure approval for a full-time broadband coordinator position at the county, whose job will be to coordinate with our villages and towns, to learn the unique needs, to know where, oh, we need more granular data in this part of this village, you know, or, you know, we need to look at an alternative here because cable's not going to work for whatever reason, fiber, you know, we can't get in there, we can't do the dig, or whatever it is. Or this one, it's going to be too expensive with the middle mile, so we've got to secure that money first. So we need somebody whose job it is to do that. And I'm really happy to tell you, we now have it. In fact, we've gone through the interviewing process, and an offer has been made. So we're just soon, I was hoping I'd be able to tell you the who tonight, but we're just not quite there yet on that.
What is your definition of granular data?
Well, just meaning that we can get broad-based data, such as who, in general, has broadband, like who has broadband in this particular neighborhood and who doesn't, okay? But maybe we want to know more than that. We maybe want to know, are the speeds in that household? Let's say it's a household.
Sure.
Okay. So if we're looking at a neighborhood, and we're looking at households, so we can, it can be as simple as, these, this many households have access to broadband, and there are some that maybe don't. And then that would be maybe the extent of it. We could go more granular. We could say, well, let's see what their speeds are. Let's see how their speeds vary. And if the speeds, which indicate, you know, bandwidth for what, you know, and what used to serve a household no longer does, so, right, you can't necessarily have a parent working from home, and two kids doing homework, and maybe somebody wanting to talk to grandma over in Norway, or, you know, whatever it is. So more granular data would maybe give us a set of speeds that people are experiencing. We might also get data, we might do some, you know, like we did with the survey that we sent out, we might look at usage and whether or not people have, not just accessibility, but is it reliable and meeting their needs? Is it affordable? That's more granular data. Is, do you, you know, is it available to you, and the reason you don't have it is because you can't afford it. So the more of that kind of data we have, the more the solution refines itself for us.
And the amount of service providers in the area? Because I know our area is very limited on service providers.
Absolutely.
And that's terrible.
And part of the problem there is that we have to attract the service providers here. That is the way that we're set up right now, is that we want to partner with them. And part of what we see, not to overstate this role of the coordinator, but we're seeing part of that coordinator's role is to foster relationships with internet service providers so that when we need a partnership, we can say, you know, the Village of Cambridge wants, you know, kind of to partner with an ISP to deal with these neighborhoods that maybe have pockets that they are maybe served, but they are underserved, you know. So it's not that they don't have any, but it's not serving their needs. So that's another, another role of this coordinator will be to cultivate those relationships. And, I mean, we're looking at about 15% to 20%, I think, is a rough estimate of the underserved in Dane County. And I think those are all, the great majority of them are in rural Dane County. So if you take Madison out of that, I mean, I think it's an extreme amount of people that have insufficient broadband right now in rural Dane County.
Well, they have no choice.
Absolutely. It's ridic, well, I mean, yes, and that's why we need to fix it.
Well, of course, it's ridiculous. They should have choice.
Yes, absolutely. Yeah, yeah, because they're...
We're limited on choice where I live. And the providers are name-brand, but they just have it because of their name. So getting in other providers, I think, would be a great thing.
Well, and...
TDS would be an awesome thing.
And part of the issue is that what is called the middle mile, it's those long stretches, you know, where there are no houses in between, and internet service providers are a business, you know, and, you know, kind of one of the rules of thumb roughly is they need 10 households per mile to make it worth their while to put in the cable. So that might be a place that we'll be able to do some partnering with them. So I'm going to just move on, but feel free to ask questions. I love questions. So we've had a couple of wins recently. One is that we secured a BEED Planning Grant, which is broadband equity access and deployment. And what it allows us to do is, it gives us resources and money so that we can flesh out our five-year action plan on our overall deployment and implementation of our broadband infrastructure plan. And then, the other thing we did is, there's a big lack. There's a pot of money from the Federal Commission. It's the Affordable Connectivity Program, ACP. And it gives $100 into qualifying households for equipment, and $30 a month on their internet bill, on their broadband bill, you know, long-term. And in Dane County, only 20% of our eligible households have applied. So we got this funding so that we can help get the word out about the ACP program. It's, you know, a bucket of money that's there, and it can be helping our residents. So we're going to get them connected to that. And it's, I mean, there's an income level, you know, that there's an automatic qualification, but there's a qualification for our older adults, our senior citizens, there's qualifications for ex-military. So there's, you know, I think quite a number of our residents would potentially qualify. And so our ongoing work is, by the end of this year, by the end of 2023, we will hopefully have our priorities of where we need infrastructure, you know, kind of where our, you know, we'll have our coordinator in place. And, you know, I'll be bringing that person around to start connecting with our municipalities, or, you know, my, the towns and villages. And what we're looking at is, you know, an equitable, reliable, and comprehensive broadband network capable of addressing our telecommunications needs for the 21st century. We're really looking out. We're really looking at, we're building this as something that will be sustained for our next generation. It's long overdue, and we're glad to have made this much progress. So, other questions?
Is this something the federal government, the federal government claims that everybody's going to have internet by 2030?
Well, the federal government is providing a good amount of money. And now Dane County, rural Dane County especially, is well-positioned to get some of that money in a way we weren't until we had our own data, until we, and then until we knew where our infrastructure was. So, yes, I mean, that's, it was, it was an issue before, you know, anybody had heard about COVID-19. And that just kind of very much amplified it, I think, for all of us. And it's an, I mean, it's not a hard sell. There are very few people who say, oh, we don't need, you know, we don't need broadband in our, or even if they don't want it for themselves, they understand the necessity for economic development and health of communities and all, so.
One question here.
Sure.
On this ACP, this funding, can you get us information? I'm not sure what to do with it. But for the rural folks that may have some qualifications and don't know about this, we've got to figure out how to get that out so that that could perhaps benefit them.
Yes, thank you.
But I don't know where to go, who, you know, the forms, the application process.
So Samantha, do you think that'd be something the library could assist with? If they had the forms there?
Yeah, absolutely.
And that could at least be an area where, here's the form if you want to apply for...
They have them up in the office, too.
So I'll send it to Lisa and Samantha?
Yeah, one to do that. And then between those two, they can kind of make up a plan.
Excellent. Wonderful.
Okay. Steve, have a question for you?
Oh, sorry, yes.
We've seen all the work going on with underground, you know, putting in the plastic conduit of the orange pipe throughout the community. And I talked to the gentleman doing it. And from the sound of it, that is a federal initiative, paying for all the conduit installation. But then the fiber optic is pulled through that conduit by the provider.
Right.
And so, say Verizon or whoever would own that conduit, own fiber.
Fiber, but not the conduit.
And if they switched in an area, they would pull that fiber out, and someone else would pull their own fiber in. It seems a little inefficient, but I suppose that's just how it has to be.
Well, and, and part of the issue there is that there was nobody coordinating the overall infrastructure, right? It was just kind of willy-nilly, if you will, depending on where the internet service providers were going. And because understandably, they don't need to tell us where they have infrastructure, it makes it hard to plan. So now, we were able to obtain that on our own through this consulting firm, which will hopefully help have it be more of an efficient installation and long-term plan. We would know the next few steps out instead of just doing what's in front of us with this grant, with this ISP. So, yes. And we're also looking at the possibility of whether or not the county can own the conduit.
That's what I was going to suggest the next time.
We're looking, yeah, we're looking into that.
Is there some way to become cooperative or something? So that conduit, I'm sure it's good for more than a few years, that you don't have to yank it out and put in new conduits, or not conduits, but fiber optic cable through the conduit just because someone else is now providing service?
Well, and one of the...
It sounds like that's being worked out.
We're looking at that. And the other thing we did a study on was looking at when the road is open anyway for something else, which is the most expensive part of the, of dropping in the conduit, that we would then put, you know, we're seeing if we can get the licensing, that then the county could do the empty conduit, and then lease it out. Because then we could have much more say about where the infrastructure is going. Those are kind of two of the licensing things we're looking at right now. Sure.
Okay. Any other questions for Kate? Okay. Well, appreciate you coming by, Kate.
It's always a pleasure. Thank you for having us. Nice seeing you. Thank you.
We look forward to hearing of your successes and increasing our broadband here in the future.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And I'll follow up with that ACP intervention.
That'd be great. Thank you.
All right. We're still in the public comment. Is there anybody else that would like to speak at this time that's not scheduled for later in the agenda?
I have something.
For public comment?
Well, yeah, because it's not on the agenda, and I'll go sit on the other side if you want me to.
Please do. I guess I, you know.
Okay. Paula Hollenbeck, 310 West Main Street. So this last weekend, we celebrated Midwest Fire Fest here in Cambridge. And I wanted to, I'm one of the volunteers. I volunteer, I'm a big proponent of the Fire Fest and what it brings to the community and what it does for the community. I am, we had another successful year, seeing how many people come in, seeing the educational opportunities, seeing the informational things that go on there, and just the fun that it's had with all of the different events that are held. That Fire Fest event is put on by an incredibly small amount of people. And when you think about all of the work that those handful of people do to bring thousands of people into the Cambridge community for a weekend, that benefits every single business in the community. I think, I just want to congratulate them and thank them for their success. I would also encourage then all of those businesses who are benefited by the people that Fire Fest brings in, when the Arts Council comes to you to say, hey, would you like to sponsor Fire Fest, to say yes. Because they're bringing in the people that give you a really great weekend of business. And Fire Fest, the event itself, does not make money. We break even every year between the band acts and all of the vendors we bring in and everything else that the Fire Fest brings in. They basically break even. So any help that they can get from that sponsorship from the community is greatly appreciated and used very well, I think. We had, there was, I can't think of any issues from the event at all this year. And even Officer Joe, when he stopped by the couple times, said it was a really incredibly well-run event. So, thank you. I don't know, Steve, if you want to add anything?
I think you said it all.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Paula. Is there anybody else that would like to speak at this time before I close the public comment? Okay, public comment is closed. Moving on, approval of the consent agenda. And it has the Village Board minutes of July 11th, and it also has water and sewer of July 18th.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Okay, discussion?
There were just a couple little typos in it. I can get those to you after, Lisa, we don't talk about them here.
Okay. All those in favor of approval of the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, carries. Reports, President's report. I was going to mention the Fire Fest. And I will say that the business owners that I talked to did have a very good weekend. The people that go to this, they kind of move around town. They don't just stay there. And so other establishments did enjoy a healthy increase in their business. In fact, I talked to one individual who was going to come in and open up on Sunday. He hadn't planned on it, but he felt that the business was so good on Saturday when I saw him, talked to him, that he was going to take advantage of that. The only thing that, you know, that hit it was the storm on Saturday. And when I talked to Lori, they were on track to have a record attendance. And then they just kind of got walloped around, I want to say, 6:00 and 8:00, something like that.
We moved up, we moved up when the reveal, instead of the reveal at 9:00, 9:30, we moved it up to 8:00 to 8:15. And it was, the fire dancers came and performed, and then we were getting ready for the reveal. We could see the storm clouds rolling in. And we got it open, and had maybe five minutes for people to get to their cars before the dawn forestarted.
Yeah. I know we needed the rain, and it was, it was just unfortunate that we had to have it that night. But that's how it goes. And I think that's the reason why they want to try to move it earlier into the year, starting next year.
Yeah, it'll be June 8th and next year.
See if you break the weather.
We'll see if we break the weather curse.
Right. Steve, anything else? I wouldn't normally do this, but I know you play a big part in that Fire Fest.
I just want to say a thank you to the villain staff, too. I know Lori gave us tickets and things for...
Okay.
...whatnot, but they step up to the plate, too, with getting all the signage out and helping set up the park and taking things down, so.
Okay.
All the staff.
That wasn't me. That was, I wasn't here.
Okay, well, your staff did a stand-up job. Yeah, Cody, Cody, and especially Lee.
Yeah.
Extra cleaning at the stations and...
All right.
So they did a great job. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mark, did you want to mention anything about the CD players and their event?
No, I didn't know that, didn't go to it.
They had over 1,000 people attend that?
They had about 1,000 people attend the weekend before. 1,000 people.
What was the venue?
Up at the old gym at the school.
Beauty and the Beast?
Beauty and the Beast. They had, they had about 1,000 people. Almost every show sold out. Their second show is the end of August, the kids' show, Little Mermaid Jr. And those tickets are on sale, and they expect those to be sold out as well, especially the little kids, all the grandparents and hens and ogles, and everybody comes to see. So that brings a big boost to the community, too. People come, take the actors out to dinner, and, you know, it's a lot of people come to town for that.
Yeah, I was gone when that happened, so I didn't. I apologize for missing that one. Okay, moving on, library report. What do we have here? I know we've got it later in the agenda, too.
So I think the biggest item from the library that we talked about will be later on in the agenda, and that is determining the two people. If you weren't aware, Sue Christensen did resign for health reasons. So we had two open board positions, and it was, and we were able to, we have a recommendation for both of those positions for tonight. Other than that, we heard all of Samantha's great plans that she has for what she wants to do with the library, and we're really excited about some of the things that she has planned. I think it'll be great.
Okay, all right. We'll hear about that later. Our Director of Public Works, Todd, if you can come up and give us an update?
We already had much of an update. I was on vacation last week, but...
Thank you, Lisa, for setting this up and getting this rolling. Derek, Derek and Cody and Lee stepped in quite well. And, you know, we had the police to help us out to figure out what we had to do. And Linda came, Linda came, and actually, we worked that out with her before, before I even left. That was all taken care of. I think they, Lori, sorry. Sorry about that. I'm still trying to catch up here. And so that's, from what I understand, it was, it went quite well. Cody had his first time at doing it, so he was, he was pretty exhausted by the, by Monday morning. He was kind of edgy, but he was all right. He worked it out. He got it. And then I, I'll be going to the UW, or Virtual. Chris set me up with a UW for grading roads and doing five-year plans on roads, such things like that. And I pretty much don't have much to say. And I pretty much don't have much to say, because I, again.
Todd, I think it's a testament to your leadership that you can go on vacation during one of the busiest, you know, events that we have here in Cambridge and things go as smoothly as they are, so I appreciate that.
Kudos to you and your staff.
Thank you. More to the staff. Oh, yeah, it was.
But, you know, it takes a good leader, so.
Does it.
Todd, I've got a question and I.
Sure.
I hesitate going into this, but I walked down Water Street and the sidewalks and the trees and the terrace are so overgrown that you gotta walk off to the grass now. So, it just seems like they have a very low deck. Who is responsible for trimming those trees?
Terrace trees were responsible for. We're getting to that. We're still playing catch-up a little bit on that stuff.
Okay, as long as you're aware of it.
Oh, yeah. Yep. We still got, we still got the other side of Main Street to come up. We went down Main Street one way and now we gotta come back up the other way. And when we do that, we work around the sidewalk too.
Yeah, I talked to Jay on Monday because there's one in my house that needs attention. And he mentioned that, that it's, they have a plan for going through the village and making sure all of those terrace trees are taken care of.
Well, and not only that, it's less damage on the trucks.
Exactly.
Because when they're hanging, when they're hanging in there like that and you gotta come by with a truck. And I've seen semis just barely coming underneath those trees, you know, and it's, you know, you get an oversized load. I imagine they're hitting those trees on the way through.
Well, the trees down here, it's not semis. I mean, I'm not that tall and I'm, you gotta walk around them because it's right here. So, it's kids on bicycles and, you know, they get wet and you're gonna, it's on your to-do list and it's.
It's on Jay's to-do list.
All right, okay. Anything else for Todd? Okay, Todd, thanks very much.
Thank you.
Let's move on, Village Office Updates. Lisa?
A lot of quarterly reports, 941s, workers' comp, so forth. The safety grant that we received last year, the $10,000 that has been submitted now. Working on open records requests, the sampler, which is later in the agenda. Tammy and I have been working with the auditors, getting them all the information they need. They'll be coming in first or second week in August. They'll be doing their fieldwork, so getting them all they need. Preparing all of Joan's retirement paperwork. This week will be officially her last day, so working on all the retirement stuff for her. Board of Review paperwork has all been filed with Dane County, still waiting to hear from Jefferson County. SOA, the Statement of Assessment, has been filed with the state for Dane County. Number of ongoing projects tomorrow. Todd and I are actually doing a first informational-type meeting with Dane County on the bridge project that is expected to be done in 2025. But the contract has been awarded through the county, want to bring us in at beginning levels of the conversation so as the project moves forward, we can have input, so a lot of different things going on.
Okay, any questions for Lisa?
On the open records requests, are there fees that we charge back to the individuals related to that?
If there are fees of over $50, we can charge them back. We would have to let them know we'll be charging that. Jane has gone today. I did talk to Computer Magic about seeing if they could do the sweep of emails and so forth that are being requested. There would be a fee, so I have a call in to Jane, do we want to send that there would be a fee? Or how do we want to proceed with that? But hard copies and so forth, you know, can be charged for, but, yeah.
Any other questions for Lisa? Okay, thank you.
I have one question about the, do we have a joint meeting with Oakland coming up?
Nothing is scheduled yet.
It's usually around this time.
Usually late summer, early fall.
Okay. Well, I mean, we gotta see if it's fruitful, I guess, to schedule it. But we usually have it around, around this timeframe, August, I want to say now. That's all I have.
All right, let's move on, Item 7, Treasurers' Report Bills. Which one do you want to do first here, Lisa, for Tammy?
Tammy is on vacation this week. She did provide the budget comparison, is in your packet.
So, the first page is the revenue.
Yep.
And the second page is the expenses.
Mm-hmm.
I just wanted to make sure that's pointed out.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. And then I see, like, some of them, like Conservation and Development, it looks like we really haven't spent much of that against the budget yet. But I'm assuming that's because that's probably one of those things that we pay either once or twice a year and we just haven't gotten to that one for the year yet.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on the financial information for the budgets as compared to our actual? Okay, Lisa, can you, let's move on to bills.
The first run was in the amount of $60,497.33. The second run was $10,666.06. And for a total of $71,157.39.
I make a motion to pay the bills in the amount of $71,157.39.
Second.
Okay. Discussion, questions, issues?
In the second round of bills, Todd, there's a bill for 1,200 bucks for, you switched out.
A tooth bucket.
Yeah. What piece of equipment is it?
Because we need a tooth bucket because we can't, you can't dig into it, can't dig into dirt piles with a flat blade. You need that, you need those teeth to actually get into the dirt.
That's not the bucket that's used to lift people, was it?
No, no, no. No, it's just, it's a standard bucket with teeth on it. If it has teeth, that can dig into the dirt, so you can, it'll dig and rake for you, so.
All right. Any other questions? Okay, I went through it, I didn't have anything. Roll call, please, Lisa.
Trustee Franklin.
Yes.
Whitmer.
Yes.
Hollenbeck.
Yes.
Chris Phelps.
Yep.
Reineig.
Yes.
Neely.
Yes. Okay, let's move to new business, park reservation request, Chris Brunig. Chris?
I'll make a motion to approve the park reservation for Chris Brunig for LDK Court Park on August 1st.
I'll second.
Okay.
Just every year on my birthday, I run my age. So, this year's the big 5-0, so I'm, I'm running a loop in your neighborhood, one-mile loop. And all the donations that come in for that, usually I would be like for Wounded Warrior or something like that. But this year, all the donations are going towards the LDK Park, the playground. Cool. So, I'll start at midnight and I'll go until I get to at least 50 miles, so.
Seriously?
He doesn't ever hear.
Guess I'm glad the paramedics are here.
We gotta call on August 1st.
Not at the house, but like right there.
But it'll be, it'll be, you know, some of it will be, some donors are gonna walk with me and some are gonna run or whatever the case is. So, we'll, it'll be, it'll be an all-day event, so.
What's the date again?
August 1st, starting at midnight.
And we did talk, we do have park closing hours, but having a park permit, knowing that he is going to be there, we'll let the police know it's going on.
Yeah, I don't anticipate a lot of people being there at midnight. But maybe the Lions Club will be there to serve up some food and everything too. So, I'll be just looking for community support and it all goes towards the playground equipment, so.
That's very cool, thank you.
Okay, got a motion in a second. All those in favor of the park reservation for Chris Brunig, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, carries. Good luck, Chris. All right, let's move on, Library Board Appointments. Paula, Samantha.
Since Samantha came, I'm gonna let Samantha talk about it.
That would be good practice. Okay, so, the Library Board of Trustees met on July 12th, 2023. And we interviewed four individuals who are interested in being appointed to our Library Board. Like Paula mentioned earlier, we have two positions currently open for filling. And so, the Library Board of Trustees would like to recommend Carrie Reddington to fill one of those positions and Pam Schmidt to fill the second position. Their terms would be from this August through August 26th.
I will make a motion to approve Carrie Reddington and Pam Schmidt to serve on the Library Board of Trustees for a term of August 2023 through, 22 through 2026.
I'll second.
Okay.
We had four really qualified people on the board and anyone before would have worked really well. But I think in the two that the board chose, I think we got a good mix that represents different segments of the community that currently aren't on the Library Board.
Correct.
Where do they live?
They, I believe they both live, what, live.
Yeah.
I know one of them lives on the lake.
We have all of the required representation of what we need, all the board members that are on already. So, basically, we could pick just people from the community without having to worry about meeting one of those requirements.
Do you have any of the two that affects our remains?
Carrie and.
Yeah, about the other two, were any of them?
Mentioned that maybe one of the newcomers to the area would be good because they were a former teacher or whatever it was.
Carrie's only been in.
Carrie's fairly new to the area. She is not who you're thinking of though. She's, she works with, what is her current position? Her current position is in Department of Revenue in Madison.
Yeah, the other person I think was retired to this area.
Correct. She is, she is retired, her name is, was Bonnie.
Yep, that's the one.
Yep, she, she's a retired teacher. She just moved to Cambridge 18 months ago.
Right.
Okay, any other questions? All right, so we've got a motion in a second for approval of Carrie Reddington and Pam Schmidt to the Library Board. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, let them know.
Thank you so much, we appreciate it.
Thanks very much, Samantha.
If you want to stay up there for a minute, Samantha, because we'll, we'll talk jointly on the next one.
And the next item is, according to the amended agenda, it's the Amundson Library Cleaning Personnel.
Yes, so, our person who has been cleaning since, I think, May of 2021 is semi-retiring. So, she did give her notice today that August 11th will be her last day. So, knowing we don't meet again until August 8th, Sam and I were talking today, it's like, let's do an amended agenda, get this done so we can kind of discuss, you know. As some of you know, before Dee was here helping us, we did have a part-time employee on staff who did the maintenance in the two buildings. When she left, Dee stepped in, she's independent contractor, her own small cleaning business. So, Peach had been here 20 hours a week between the two of us. Dee has been maybe 10 hours a week doing more of the basic cleaning, whereas Peach did more maintenance and that type of things too. So, you know, kind of just want to get a feel, do we want to put an ad out to see if we can fill the same type of position? Or, you know, is it something we want to go to personnel to talk about? Or I didn't want to wait two weeks to talk about it because then Todd and his staff would. Dee had just taken a vacation not long ago and they stepped in and did the cleaning in both buildings and so.
I think outsourcing the cleaning is better than hiring a employee.
But seeing that outsourcing is probably, you know, put it out there for somebody locally to do that.
Was there a recommendation by the person retiring of a company?
No, and I had, I didn't have a chance to talk to where it was.
Maybe we could ask.
I know there's a couple small ones in town.
There are a number of smaller.
Individuals, some that do homes, small businesses, you know, one of them would.
One of them would be interested, we could just get them to add out and see who might be interested, see what their offers are and what their costs are.
Would be, and then I think we make the decision based on that and their availability.
But I think to answer your question of whether we go with the Peach model or the latest model, it's probably the latest, I would imagine. But do we need to make a motion for that, to put it in the paper or is it just, you need some guidance?
Yeah, I just wanted guidance, I didn't want to.
Spending money though, do you need a motion?
It's spending money that's already budgeted.
It is already budgeted, okay.
Services and wants somebody, we have applicants.
Just asking.
Yeah. We can put an ad out and see what type of response we get.
Cool.
And then that's split between Amundson and the Library?
And they mark the time that they spend in each, so it is actual time spent in each facility and paid that way. Separate time sheets for each.
Okay, you know what to do then. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Samantha coming by, appreciate it. All right, now let's move on to unfinished business. We'll start with the sample update. Steve and Jane Lundretti, we got our memo here. Did everybody get a copy of this?
Yes.
Three pages, okay. Steve?
Thanks for being with us on the Board. Steve Strass, 313 South Street. However, I'm here representing the Water and Sewer Committee, which Chris chairs, as well as the Village Representative on the Cambridge Oakland Wastewater Commission. So, a little background, as you probably all know, there've been a couple incidences out at our wastewater treatment plant of a very concentrated waste coming in and basically upsetting the biological balance of the treatment plant. There's two basins and one of the basins, this happened in December and then again in May. One of the basins was knocked out completely as far as the bugs, if you want to call it, the treatment biota in there were killed. And so, Steve, our superintendent out there, had to switch over to an emergency, single-basin mode and gradually bring that first basin back by feeding bugs from another treatment plant. And it took about six weeks to really bring it back totally. And then he's operating it again, everything's fine, and then another big slug comes through. He measured, there's the concentration, concentration of waste is the biological oxygen demand, BOD. Generally, it's about 250 maybe to 300. It was over 900 what came through, so it was very concentrated waste. And that's after it was diluted through, we knew it came from Cambridge, not from the town of Oakland, just because the waste comes in from those two communities separately and it's sampled. And the rate that the two communities pay is based on that concentration of waste and volume. And when those happened, of course, there was a. And when those happened, of course, there was a, a large surge in the average that came through from the, from the village. And Steve estimated about a $1,500 cost to the village in each of those two months. So there's a real cost involved to, you know, to treat that waste because it takes more chemicals, it takes more energy, whatever. So, so there's, there's a real cost involved. We don't know exactly where it's coming from, where these two slugs came from. However, we highly suspect that it's the Dancing Goat Distillery only because they deal with very concentrated organic material. They do haul a lot of their waste out that gets, goes to farms and things for animal feed. But there is the, always the opportunity for someone to open the valve, either by accident or on purpose, and dump some of that very concentrated organic material to the sewer. Steve contacted them both times. One time they said there was a possibility, the other time said no, they didn't, they don't think it was them. So we, I guess we're not really pointing fingers and saying it's definitely them, but we need to do some, some exploration. We need to find out where this is coming from. It's not a, a daily event, but it, it's happened enough times that we're definitely concerned. It, it impacts the, as you saw in the memo from Attorney Landry, that, or Landretti, that, that it impacts the, the permit that the village holds for, from the DNR. So because that concentration is so high that the effluent from the, from the wastewater treatment plant then exceeds what our permit allows. And, you know, Steve gets it back within controls best he can, but like I said, it takes a while. And so it, so we're running the risk of being in violation of our permit and being fined by the DNR. So there's, you know, there's a cost issue, there's obviously an operational issue for Steve and our, our, you know, staff out there trying to get the, get the plant back up running again. And then there's the, the permit, there's a legal issue. So, like I said, we're not really pointing fingers, but we need to do some, some exploration. We need to figure out where this is coming from. And like I said, our first guess is the distillery. So what, the Water and Sewer Committee made a motion in the June meeting, I believe it was, that recommended to this board that a sampler be installed or have a sampler installed. Our ordinances dictate that any industrial producer can be required by the village to install a sampling station, install and operate to determine, you know, if, if they in fact are exceeding a normal domestic waste. And if so, they have to pay the, a surcharge to cover the, the cost of treating that waste. There is a precedent for this. The Melster Candy Company was here for many years and they had, there, we knew that they were constantly putting out a higher concentrated waste. It wasn't a surge here and there, but it was generally higher every month. So the sampler was installed there. Melster paid for the sampler and operated it. The village took the samples and ran the samples for them. And then the, the surcharge that was added to their normal sewer charge was based on the concentration of that waste each month.
So when you ran the samples, excuse me?
Yeah.
Did you charge back to Melster's and the cost of running those samples?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, that was, it was, it's a cost to be borne by, by the producer, by, by the generator of the waste, correct, Tim? So, so our recommendation again from the Water and Sewer to this board was to require Dancing Goat Distillery to install a sampler at their discharge manhole and to operate it. And, and that if, if there is a, a high concentration come through, then we'll know exactly where it came from, how, how concentrated was it? And, and then we could charge, well, in this case, it's not just a question of charging. It would be because it's so concentrated, it's actually an operational issue. So then a requirement may be for them to hold waste back and dilute it or bring it through slowly, bleed it into the system over time so that it, it won't be a shock loading to the treatment plant. So there, there may be a requirement down the road. Again, if it's, if it's them, we don't know, but if it is them, there could be some systems required that would, that would mitigate that high impact surge that comes through. Other thing is that if there is a sampling station and the staff there know there is one, there might be an incentive on their part to not dump a lot of high concentrated waste. So they could haul that out in the trucks like they have in, in most cases. So it, it could be a deterrent as well as an, an indication of, you know, or, or motivation for, for a fee. So I, there is a sampler available. So I know this board discussed it and was a little uncertain how to go about doing this. But one thing that could be done is that sampler could be made available to the Dancing Goat kind of as, to help with the cost of it. It's not a requirement by the board, but they could do that. But the, the Dancing Goat Distillery would have to install an enclosure for that and run power out to it, electrical service to run it. Our, our staff would, could take the samples and take them and Steve out at the treatment plant said he would be willing. He's a little concerned about being kind of caught in the middle of this, but we reassured him. He's certified. He has no reason to, you know, to adjust those samples. He'll run them as he runs any other sample he runs. He does it for Rockdale now as a consultant and we charge Rockdale for their samples. So again, like Tim's asking, the, there'd be a fee. I mean, it's $12.50 a sample, so it's not like it's a huge expense. But he'd be running basically one a day. So, you know, do the math, it'll be, you know, a few dollars a month. It's a 24-hour sample. The sampler grabs every hour, 24. And then each day, someone has to take that sample to Steve and he'll run it out at the treatment plant. And it'll, it'll give us an indication on an ongoing basis of what that, what they're producing out there wastewise. There was a, I know one idea of putting the sampler at the lift station by the winery. One problem with that is then you're now mixing that with all that, you know, the apartment buildings and the homes and the winery and the vet clinic and the dentistry, that's all going in that one. So now you, you know, yeah, you knew something came through, but you don't know where it came from. And so having it right at the distillery, we'll know for sure. If it, if, if we get a big hit loading and it's not high concentrated as, at their facility, well then they're vindicated. We know it's not them. Again, we don't know where else, but then at least we eliminated one and we'll go from there. But some people thought the winery might be a source, but they don't produce wine there. They just sell it. They have a commercial kitchen, but it's no worse than any other kitchen in the village here. So, so we don't, we don't suspect that it's them. So, yeah, we just, again, we, we think it's probably coming from them, but we don't want to accuse them until we take some samples and know one way or another.
How long do you think the sampler would have to be there?
We'd, we'd, well, we'd run it continuous until we saw a, a surge come through.
It could be.
It could be, you know, it, they've been coming through about every six months. You know, maybe it's more like four months, I guess. So what we suspect is one of the staff, either like I said, accidentally or on purpose dumped a big load of something and. So there's also an issue of cleaning solvent, you know, cleaning materials that could have, could have been used and that'll impact the treatment plant. So it could have been a chemical as well as a biological load. There's certain very concentrated disinfectants. And of course, you know, they, they kill what you want, you, the bacteria you don't want, but they also could kill the bacteria we want at, at the, at the treatment plant that are doing it. So, so there was some concern there. It could have been that, those cleaning solvents too. So, so, yeah, I think the board has to make a decision, this board. Exactly how you're, you know, I think it has to be, you know, follow our ordinance.
Right.
It says.
That's a great.
Would be our recommendation. Again, you could offer the sampler, which would help, you know, save them about $1,500 or better. I don't know exactly the cost of it, but it would, it would soften the blow somewhat for them. And offering to run the samples at 12 hours and 50 cents would be a whole lot cheaper than if they were to farm it out to a private firm. It'd probably be about twice that cost. So if, again, if Steve's willing to do it, it sounds like he would be, we could save him some costs there as well.
The village has a sampler?
COWC has an extra one.
COWC has, well.
As I said, I'd, I'd like to make a motion, Steve, that we require the Dancing Goat to install a sampling station per our Village of Cambridge ordinance 13.16.220 Alpha.
I'll second.
Okay, do we have a sampler?
There, there is a sampler, a 24-hour sampler, but it, it needs to be in an enclosed building or structure, you know, small structure. It currently is, is, they chill it down. You have to keep the samples cool until they're run. So they use ice and the ice has been melting too rapidly. So by having a, a power run out, there can be a small refrigeration unit for the sample bottle. And, and then they don't need to be taking ice out there every day. So there is a sampler that'll serve the purpose, but it needs some support, structure and electricity to, to function. And then it, you know, it could be locked and our village could have a key to it and so.
And if this, if we do the sampling, as I think we should, but what do you do with those incidents back in, would you say, May and, and November?
That's, that's history. There's nothing, because again, we don't know that it came from them. Yeah. There's nothing. Yeah, we need, we need to learn moving forward where this is coming from.
I mean, Jane Landretti's memo on this, I mean, page two, the first two paragraphs, for me, that was really. Carried the weight. I wasn't entirely sure as I sat through your meeting and, you know, I won't go through all that, but this makes a compelling case that if we don't do anything, we're going to have the state of Wisconsin, you know, really taking an active interest in all of it. We're going to lose options then.
Right.
If they get involved, so, you know. Seems like this is the best thing to do.
Yeah, I know it's not a popular thing to do, but it's.
It's pretty serious.
It's, needs to be done.
Is there training required for the staff or?
Just, just in the way of taking samples, you know, yeah, but it's simple enough. They go in and, you know, take the bottle and put a new bottle in and then take it to Steve. So there'll, there'll be some. And I, I think that there was an attempt to do some, some sampling earlier. And so I think Derek was doing it or.
Could get that thing to work.
Okay, well, and I think. The, it's, the problem was the ice, yeah. And so if a cooler goods installed, then, then that would solve that problem.
I think we should offer our sampler to them if they want to use it. Obviously, there's a little bit more legwork on their part if they want to use it, but I like that olive branch there. And then, I don't know, Chris, if you want to amend your motion to put a deadline on when it has to be installed? It seems pretty time sensitive. We have another event like this. We could lose our permits. I don't know, two weeks, a month?
I'd, I'd give them at least, say, six weeks.
Six weeks.
Because it, power has to be installed.
Yeah, that's true. That's true.
And they got to put it there by the light path and everything, so.
Yeah.
That's, that's the manhole cover.
On the backside of their building?
You know, to be honest, I don't know exactly. I know it's a little bit of a run from the building. I think it's along the trail.
Right, to the east.
So I can amend my motion with a, with a six-week deadline.
And just a clarification too, if they use the COWC sampler, if.
It's a borrow.
It's a borrow. If something happened to one of COWCs, they have two samplers there. If they needed to pull it, they pull it. It is borrowed and.
Okay.
Yeah.
And we talked to Steve Sainsbury.
He's very adamant about the fact that they would need that back.
If.
Okay. If one of theirs failed.
Okay.
He feels it's better to use it instead of it just sitting there not being used. But if they needed to use it. Yeah, if one of theirs failed, they'd.
Or if it needed repair, maybe you could, you know, dictate that they covered repair cost. Would be a good caveat too.
Yeah, and a follow-up on a couple points that Steve made. The monthly bills and you on Water and Sewer know this usually range anywhere from $55,000. We've had up to $63,000, $64,000. You know, so we see those fluctuations. Certain months are higher. And that is getting passed on to every ratepayer in the village. And so that's kind of the basis for state statutes and the subsequent ordinances that municipalities have to hold those responsible for the higher discharges rather than spreading it to all ratepayers. And that's just based on the volumes, the cost of the chemicals to treat and when he has to go into these extra modes is borne by both communities. So Oakland is paying not.
Not as much, but.
Happy about paying. You know, those additional costs that we know are coming from the village side. But the operation of the plant is a joint.
Expense.
I'll provide some visuals to the see, you know, if there's some confusion to what, what is happening out there at the, the plant. Here's some pictures that Cher, and I'll give them to Lisa at the end of the meeting so she can enter them in. But this is the events that are happening that cause, causes Steve to pull out what little hair he has left.
The, the December one, he said, did smell like alcohol. He said the, the one in May did, did not, had more of, had more of a chemical smell.
For cleaning.
Like a cleaning solvent, yeah.
So the one at, the vet in December, they said it could have been them? They thought maybe?
Well.
They didn't say yes, didn't say no?
They were, you know, Mike was a good representative and had a good relationship.
Right.
With, with Steve. And so he, he was like, well, you know, it, it wasn't supposed to happen, but it's possible that a valve got left open one night, sort of thing.
There was a high volume, high volume on the lift station too.
Yeah, yeah.
We can detect that volume on the lift station.
Right, by the runs. Yeah, exactly, Todd. Yeah. By runtime, so.
I have a clarifying question. So you said six weeks. In this, she's, yeah, in this she outlines the timeline that the plans for the installation of the controller, manhole access plans, they have to be approved by the committee prior to the beginning of the construction. So if, if the timeline doesn't work out for the committee, maybe they have to have a, which committee is it? I don't, actually don't.
It would be our Water and Sewer Committee.
So we'd have to have like, if need be, an emergency session or something?
You know, it's a good point, Eric. If, if they're moving forward and, you know, they, they bring something to us and it takes an extra week or two, I think we can, we can flex, as long as we know they're moving forward.
I know, I think the concern is more, you know, if they're using one of our samplers or one of COWC samplers, that's going to be approved. If they're coming in with something new, then we would need our engineers to be reviewing it to make sure it's going to meet the needs that we have. So.
Good point.
You know, depending if it is the COWC sampler, it's going to go quicker and.
Who is going to be working with Dancing Goat if we make a decision to move forward and have this requirement? Who's working with Dancing Goat to let them know of these requirements? And, you know, what the requirement would be for the building?
I suppose MSA.
Yeah, and Jane may do the initial contact, saying the board did approve this. Here's the timeline. We're envisioning if, you know, the sampler's there, if you want to use that.
If you go by what we did with Melster's, our, our engineering, engineer on record, Town and Country was very involved in that. And working with Melster's to make that happen. So I would imagine for us it would be MSA.
So could we have, instead of having Jane reach out to them, could we have MSA reach out to them?
I think initially.
I think initially.
Would have to reach. Would have to reach out to let them, let them know the board.
Yeah, I think, I think the initial contact may be better from Jane and then, you know, work with MSA on the details.
Yeah, if there's, if there's any pushback from them, probably it'd be better to be an attorney dealing with them than an engineer. Would be my guess.
I, I.
Six of one, half dozen of the other.
My concern is that it coming from the attorney may in and of itself be an issue versus us just letting, just us as the board letting them know what they need to do.
Our, our engineers have also been told they're not allowed to step foot on their property though.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's why I say six of one, half dozen of the other.
Okay.
I, they won't want to see it coming from either of them, but.
Okay.
Okay.
I got one more thing. So in the event six weeks goes by, they don't do anything. So per our ordinances, we will install the sampler and, and charge, and charge them.
Yeah. Right.
And that would be delineated in, in Jane's correspondence.
Okay, just so they know that in ordinances.
Yeah. The only problem there, of course, Chuck, would be the, the power. Like we put in the structure and the, and the refrigerator and the sampler.
Yeah.
But how do we get power to it without them plugging into their outside outlet?
Get another sampler that doesn't require power?
Uh, there are battery operated ones, but the cooler is the issue. The, the, the refrigerator takes.
Power unit that's out, just a little bit past there too, that you could probably talk to the Lion Energy on and see if you could just go that route.
If we need to.
If we need to, yeah.
So we've got about.
Pretty sure there's a box out there.
Okay.
Do we do solar?
The sewer or the, the manhole covers.
Oh, okay. Of course you'd have to have a meter and everything, but still.
Still.
Yeah.
All right. Okay, we have a motion in a second. Do we have any more questions on this? Lisa, can you just, uh, repeat what the motion was here?
Um, to require Dancing Goat to install a sampler per our ordinances and we can, um, get the specific ordinance 1316.
I think it's important to say sampling station.
Sampling station, um.
Because you have the sampler, but you also need the.
The station around it.
Electricity, the housing.
And this is going to be in six weeks? We got the timetable in there?
Yeah.
Okay. We're all comfortable with that?
I have a question. Um, is the alternative that they willingly hold back their, um, waste and rather than going through the sampling route, is there, do they have the option of just keeping the waste in bernal of the building and trucking it out?
Well.
Trucking all of it out?
They'd have to haul all their waste and that, yeah, that wouldn't be practical.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Just thought I'd.
They haul some of it already.
They do haul some. We do give them a stillage credit for gallons that they ship off, so.
Cause I was just thinking, you know, you said if they don't do anything in six weeks' time, um, what would we do? And we don't, if they have that option of trucking it off, at least maybe we, if Jane could imply that there has to be some sort of communication, good faith effort, communication that something will be done?
Plans.
Plans, yeah. If you want to truck it all out, then so be it, but, right?
But they'd have to truck out their domestic waste and everything, so it's kind of, kind of impractical.
Yeah, and remembering.
Cause they have cooling water that goes down.
They do have a deduct meter for things that go in the evaporator, evaporates, so it does measure that.
Mm-hmm.
But remembering that our system, it is assumed what goes in, goes out. So they have the deduct meter that's deducted, the stillage is deducted, everything else is assumed, it goes down.
Down the sanitary, yeah.
Okay. Are there any other questions? All right, um, we're all comfortable with the motion. Uh, all those in favor, uh, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, done. We're gonna go ahead with this.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, Steve.
Appreciate it.
You brought a lot more background and knowledge than, than we have.
Okay, moving on, unfinished business. Fire commission update.
Uh, fire commission wise, I, uh, there's been a, quite a few open records requests, uh, you've all seen. Uh, an email was sent from myself to the, uh, Mr. Cook, uh, asking for a few things. But other than that, I haven't had a meeting, a fire commission meeting yet, so I don't really have much to report.
Okay.
Any questions or concerns you'd like me to bring to the, hopefully a future fire commission meeting?
That was a good email. I agree with all your points.
Yep.
And it will say the letter that this board asked Jane, um, to put together has been sent off to the commission as well.
Yep.
Okay.
And the timeline, the clock is now started on, on that, for the IGA.
All right. Any other questions for Chris? All right, thank you. Correspondents, uh, we don't have anything. Uh, questions, referrals to staff or future agenda items? Anybody?
I gotta, so I'm going to be leaving on August 20th for, it could be up to eight weeks for airline training. So, and I still want to be able to participate in the board meetings. I don't know, can I call in? Put me on speakerphone or I don't, what is it? What are the options here?
Yeah, I don't know if we have a policy in place. I can take a look.
Do we not have a Zoom thing for when COVID was, you couldn't hold in-person meetings?
We do. The issue is for us, it's always been all or nothing because we don't have the technical stuff to have Zoom here on the meeting, interacting. Um, it's always been all or nothing.
I, I, I don't see why we couldn't bring in a, a video with sound where he's just sitting here on a camera instead of him sitting here in person? And the public could still be in this room, he'd be able to, you know, I mean, what he'd be able to see might be limited, but, you know, we'd be able to see him or, or hear him at least. Yeah. I mean, that, 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 that should be doable with, I mean, I probably could do that with my laptop.
And I guess I, this has come up in the past one thing and if, I would want the board to put a policy in place. Um, just because we don't want board members saying, I'm up north for the summer, I'm not here for three months. You know, so to have policies in place on when it's, you know, um, because this discussion happened during COVID too, I don't want to be sitting here with a room of 20 people and two board members here and the rest, you know, for whatever reason. So if we have a policy in place, you know, here's where it's acceptable if you're going for work reasons.
If you're going for work, right, I think if you're going for work reasons, that's one thing. If you're just on vacation, like when Kathy went down to Arizona, you know, she just didn't attend the meetings.
Yeah.
And I think that's, I, yeah.
I think we ought to make accommodations for, for Chuck.
I think too, because it's.
It's a work-related issue. It's not, he's doing eight weeks of vacation though. It would be, that it seems that way. Just in my opinion.
Flight school.
Flight school. It, it's easy for a friend.
It's not hard. I won't be studying.
Yeah, you won't be studying at all.
Going to Cocoa Beach, right? Going to meet Kathy Nelson.
So do you think we need to actually, can you develop just a simple policy that says?
I can get some samples.
Okay, okay. And then at the next meeting, we can.
Yeah.
Address that and, cool.
What committees are you on? Public Works?
Public Works, Audit Finance, uh, Joint Fire Police.
Audit and Finance, we usually start meeting in like September. September's been the earliest we've been. Usually it's like October, you know, October to get something done by November.
Um, yeah, um, Public Works, we are looking, um.
Week after next.
I emailed. I emailed you.
Oh, did you?
Hmm?
Be the chair on any of it?
Just recently.
Public Works, so we'll have that meeting before I leave, that should be fine.
Yeah, so, um, we'll get that set up for that week before.
Are you on personnel too or no?
Personnel, Plant Commission, yes, a lot. So we'll cover them then for you.
All right, so Lisa, then you're going to look at possible language just on a general overall policy?
Yeah.
Okay. And then number two, do we have the equipment to be able to do this with Chuck? Do we have to appropriate anything?
The laptop that you, that, that the office has upstairs could easily be used to, for a Zoom meeting. Yeah, and we just have to buy one Zoom license, which wouldn't be that expensive if you do a single. Because remember, it's only a one-to-one meeting. It's him meeting the board. He doesn't have to worry about all the constituents joining into that Zoom meeting as well.
Yeah.
It's just a one-to-one meeting, so.
He can still hear what's going on.
Correct, yeah, yeah.
I have to see if we have our Zoom.
Time constraint though too, right?
But that's, that's if you do the free Zoom meeting. If you pay for one license, then.
We did, I have to see if we still have or if we did stop that after COVID, um, cause that was a monthly charge, so I'll look into it.
Or, or you know what, uh, you could find out from Computer Magic if we have Microsoft Teams. Cause we could do it through Teams as well.
Yeah.
Good point.
And you would just need to log into the, the Teams environment like you log into Outlook? And you could probably, and then you, we, we could, I can.
Lisa, if you need help with any of this, let me know and I can stop in.
Yeah, we'll look into it.
And do the legwork for you. Really appreciate it.
Yeah. So if the Teams is, if we already have a Teams license or find out what the cost for that might be, that might be an easier route than Zoom, cause then we're not dealing with another vendor.
Yeah.
And we're just still dealing with Microsoft.
Okay. Well, thanks for bringing that to our attention.
Yes.
Thanks, thank you for working with me.
Like in flight school.
You're welcome.
All right. Uh, is there anything else, uh, as far as future agenda items?
Yeah, uh, our stipends for our meetings that I had talked to you about earlier, I want to review them and then what everybody gets for each meeting they attend. I would like to have that on a agenda item.
More specifically? Just what each, like.
What we get.
Each board meeting and each committee meeting?
Yeah, and then.
What's each, each individual?
Each individual, you know, from president down to us and everybody.
Okay. Is there anything else for anybody?
Um, just a reminder about wanting the bike path. Where reconciliation?
Yes, and like I said, Tammy is on vacation this week.
And I, and I noticed it was, it was in the meeting minutes, so I'm like, I'll just, I'll just, I'll just throw a little reminder.
And she has started reach, she and Brian from Town and Country have started, um, that, so.
Okay, uh, upcoming meetings, August 8th Village Board, August 9th Library, 14th Plant Commission, the 15th Water and Sewer, 22nd Village Board, with public works to be determined along with economic development. And that brings us to item 13 on our agenda.
I make a motion to adjourn.
All right.